Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, December 5th, School Committee Meeting here at the Colbert School. I'm going right into the public comments. I have Mr. Keen, do you have?
Thank you. So I just still come here asking for a meeting with Mr. Lee and the members of the school committee. I asked for that back in June, and I asked for that again at the last meeting that I was present at in October. Mr. Lee sent a letter to me on October 4th stating things that I am not allowed to say in a meeting, which I never violated at any meeting previous to that. So I still ask for that public meeting, for that meeting with myself, my wife, and daughter, and him. I don't think it's asking a lot of public official to meet with a family of a student in Braintree Public Schools.
Mr. Lee, is that something?
I can certainly organize it. As you know, Mr. Keen would already met with you, your wife, and your daughter. But if you are requesting another meeting?
The first thing wasn't about what I would like to address. The first meeting was with my daughter.
I'd be happy to organize another.
Beautiful. Thank you.
And I'd be happy to attend as well.
Thank you.
We have anybody?
We have nobody with their hand up.
Nobody with their hand up. Okay, then we'll move on to matters, Mr. Lee. Oh, excuse me. Open approval of open session meetings, November 7th. Do I have a motion or any amendments?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemayor, second by Mr. Devon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to communications and commendations, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chairperson Heager. First, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving and welcome back. In terms of communications and commendations, I'm going to start with Mr. Renazza and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarships.
In your packet, you have a list of the classic three on there. John and Abigail Adams Scholarships, that is free tuition to any state school. Doesn't include room and boards, but it is free tuition, and there's a very large number of students from Braintree. Congratulations to all the students.
And obviously annually, we have a great number of students who qualify for that scholarship. It just means money to our teachers and our students in terms of their ability to reach that status. Another just commendation goes to the students who are involved in the Senior Massachusetts Music Educators Association Auditions, which is a multiple. We had several students from BHS audition, and we have had three students receive a score high enough to go on and audition for the Allstate group later this year. So Mr. Sawtelle, our music director, wanted to, you know, give a shout out to the following students. Daniel Kim, who plays the cello. Constantina Alavadodi, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, for alto. Miza Sido, soprano. Marco Zavala, orchestra, cello. And Chloe Zhang, who plays the flute. So Daniel, Constantina, and Chloe all received Allstate recommendations, and we congratulate all five for their participation in that. Just to call attention to an event that happened over the holiday break. For those of you who were able to attend on November 27th, there was the Braintree High School Wall of Fame induction ceremony that was held at Town Hall. I particularly want to applaud Rich Ellis and the Hall of Fame Committee for putting the event together. They did a wonderful job. We had seven individuals who were honored and two teams that were honored that evening. But the whole event was extremely well done. It was good to have it back in person after our COVID experience. And again, proper recognitions to some outstanding athletes and student athletes who have gone through our system over the course of time. And finally, on the communications in your packet, you will find copies of the approved policy and education and finance and operation minutes from our 10:13 meetings, which are there for your edification.
Any comments or commendations? I also want to just congratulate those students who made the Allstate recommendations. I know it's a very rigorous audition process, and if they make Allstates, they get to sing at Boston Symphony Hall, which for a student is pretty amazing, so.
Very talented kids. That's right.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to gifts to schools. Again, I will read all of these and we'll ask one motion when I'm done. Bear with me. Bay State Textiles, seven checks totaling $339.25. East Middle School, four checks totaling $13,041.20 from the yearbook sales. $33 Theater Guilds, $515 Student Council, $2,578.20, and Kruger Palooza fundraiser, $9,915. South Middle School, one check in the amount of $440 from the Grade 8 Field Trip. Braintree High School Athletic Department, one check in the amount of $1,900 from Rebel Athletic, Inc. Braintree High School Project Prove, one check in the amount of $2,000 from Vanguard. Ross Elementary School, one check in the amount of $1,500 from the Patel family to be used to improve the academic and social opportunities for all students at Ross. Braintree Public Schools Science Department, donation of an extensive rock collection. Donated to the Science Department by Eleanor Vestic, who is a Braintree resident. The Science Department appreciates a recent donation of a rock collection, which Ms. Eleanor Vestic has compiled throughout her lifetime. We look forward to sharing the collection with students in Braintree. Braintree Public Schools Gift to School, donation of coats to Cradles to Crayons. 260 coats were donated from Cradles to Crayons. Coats sizes 5 to 6 up to 1820 were sorted by school requests and distributed to every school in the district to be given to students in need. And then there's one more for the Braintree Public Schools Music Department, gift to schools in $400. One check in the amount of $400 from Braintree High School Grandparent Linda Palmer in support of Dr. Serban's BHS Orchestra and Concert Program. With that, thank you, Mr. Devon. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Cobblemayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Again, we are always very grateful for these gifts. Moving on. Trip approvals.
So in your packet, you have two requests for trips out of state. The first is the Grade 8 at East Middle School, who would like to go to Pat's Peak, which is in Henneken, New Hampshire, Saturday, January 28th or Saturday, February 4th. You also have in the same packet, East Middle School's Trills and Thrills Music Festival and Canterbury Lake Park Annual Trip. If you recall, I think it was our last meeting, you approved the South version of this trip. This is obviously the east side of things. So we are looking for approval on both trips and happy to answer any questions that I can.
Are there any questions from the committee on either trip? Or any other trips? Questions? No questions? With that, do I get a mo- can I get a motion for the Pat's Peak ski trip and the Henneken's New Hampshire ski trip for East Middle School, Grade 8?
Madam Chair.
I have a motion, I have the Devon, second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And then East Middle School, Trills and Thrills. I have a motion for that as well?
Move, Madam Chair.
Motion to Devon, and second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Excellent. Moving on. Superintendent Staff, Mr. Lee.
So this evening, we are being joined by some representatives from the Highlands Elementary School to discuss potential gifts to schools and work being done by the PTO. Before they come up and kind of present, I just want to try to be clear about what the request is of the school committee. The request relates to a potential turf field on the back lot, and they'll get into greater detail. Knowing its location, it would really, at this point, fall under the town's control, should it be accepted. But it would represent a gift to school, and as the school committee, it is seen under your purview to accept or not accept a gift to schools. So with that, I'd ask Ms. Long and her representatives to come up to the chair and tell us a little bit about the project. I have some slides for them, and we'll move forward. Dr. Long, my mistake.
I know who you are. Hi, everyone. Richard English, Vice President of Highlands School PTO. And thank you for the opportunity to speak today. So as Mr. Lee just pointed out, we had a proposition put in front of us back in June, I think, where a family member or a student's family is willing to help support the installation of turf at the Highland School, and their company does this routinely and has the capabilities. So they are willing to donate the labor and the equipment to install this. The ask on our school would be today is for us to raise the money for the material to be installed. And what you see here on this drawing is an aerial Google view from the Highland School. In the back right corner there, that green box represents approximately 75 by about 100 feet. Currently today, it is black asphalt. That would be extracted, and then the turf would be installed in that location for the kids to have a green space, if you will, to utilize for recess, et cetera. Again, the bullets here, it's tough to see with the.
I tried to move it. I'm sorry. I can't.
No worries.
My own station.
But this would really be for the kids to utilize at recess, and then, you know, any physical education classes that they want to do out there. Gives them an alternative to just pavement at this school, which this school is primarily all laptop in the areas where they play today. Jumping into that proposal, so about a 75 by 100 square foot area. $45,000 in material. And then the donation of labor, which is approximately $50,000 to $55,000, give or take. Installation could happen as early as spring of 2023. And then we would, we would, the reason why we come here today is because, as we all know, inflation affects so much. If we don't lock in pricing by January 1, we could be seeing approximately 8% to 10% increase next year in pricing, which would then is directly affected to the material, which would mean that we would have to possibly raise more money for this. So our goal is to allocate funds prior to January for a down payment, and then raise the rest of the money necessary for the final installation piece of it. Feedback, are we up there? Yep, good feedback. So we brought this back to the PTO on our second meeting, Julie, was it? Yeah, second meeting. And proposed it to the PTO. The PTO proposed it to all the parents. Overwhelmingly, they were mainly interested. They had some concerns, but what Dr. Long set up was an area or a survey that they could also give feedback back to us, and that went out to the whole committee that day. The whole school community, excuse me. We got great feedback there, and at the end of the day, when we vetted and broke down all of the feedback tools, 80% of the people were for us continuing on with this project at the school. So that's the Highlands community, students and parents for this project. 80% were still willing to go once they saw everything and to move forward. We've also reached out to community members, neighbors that abut the property, because we obviously, when you change usage of space, can change usage of how people use it, et cetera. So we met with them. No major concerns there, if I'm, you know, stating correctly. I didn't all change in the last like two weeks, but yeah, no one's pushed back on it. Everyone thinks it's a great, great opportunity for our kids and our schools to have there. And I think that's, well, it's. Yeah, so if you can ask questions, we're happy to answer any questions you may have about this opportunity for us at Highlands.
Questions from the committee. Mr. Devon.
Okay. We all know that these fields are going to need maintenance. What's the maintenance schedule look like? How come it's not here with us?
What's not being proposed here today?
Well, we know it's a conceptual idea, but I'm seeing, you know, dates here, the fact that there was a meeting, October 6th. I just heard about this, well, just a few days ago myself, so I don't even know if I'm for it or against it. All I know is, my humble opinion is, it could have been about a month ago, brought to our Finance and Operations Subcommittee, where they would have given you questions. What's the maintenance schedule going to look like? I would like to hear from someone from, what is it, Parks and Recreation, because they're going to have to clean it. Now let's ask the question, who knows how to maintain it? Because I know that there's a piece of equipment that has to spin that media back into it. So I know enough to get myself in trouble. I don't know how often you have to do it. Look, I want to be able to get something that's usable and all the things that go with it. It sounds great, but where we are right here, as much as we're accepting something onto our quote-unquote campus, if in three or four years, a bunch of kids decide that they don't care about bringing Coca-Cola and some of the other things that you cannot bring on these fields, we're going to have to know. Is there going to be a fence around it? Who's going to, who's going to manage this field? We know that we've got the town such as like that. I'd like to see more concrete plans that answer those questions, that bring me to a yes, rather than a good conceptual idea. But the devil's in the details. And we've had other things through the, some of the other outside classrooms that have come before us. Ross in particular, Morrison, that they've come forward to us, given us this type of a presentation. We ask certain questions that they come back in our next meeting. Answer said questions? Oh, all the i's have been dotted and the t's have been crossed. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. Taking some guidance from internal people here, so it was never indicated that that's where you needed it to be for this presentation. We can happily do that. Those are some questions that we've obviously concerned. Dr. Long's had up, like how do we restrict it, protect it, snow removal, et cetera. We've actually had these types of conversations. We weren't under the impression that that's the operational aspect that you wanted today. Happy to bring it back with that level, but that wasn't the guidance that we thought we had to come here today with. It was more of, are we, do we have the ability today to put a 75 by 100 square foot or 100 square feet of, or 7500 square feet of turf in this lot? But if we want to get to the operational aspect, happy to meet with the town and walk through those. Liam here, who is part of the team that would install it, he can help us talk about curbing and what we can do there and how we create non-trip hazards, et cetera, and protect the land. We can do that.
To the chair? Sorry. Is there also, like, we need a maintenance, like, is there a maintenance every year? Where does that money come out of? Does that come from PTO to town? We're already facing budget cuts, like, it's, yeah, definitely, it's.
It's a completely valid question. One of the books that we have here with us is Mr. Liam Fleming, who is a Highlands parent, who is the person that is going to, has offered, I should say, to donate the labor associated with this project if the PTO is able to fund the materials. So he came kind of in the hopes that he would be able to answer some of these more specific technical questions for you. If you don't mind, Mr. Fleming, if you want to jump in about the maintenance. I know that we had talked about annual maintenance plan and kind of roughly without entail.
Yeah, so typically, an annual maintenance of a field like this would be, the equipment you're referring to would be twice a year, sweeping it, fixing the front runner. It's not significant, it just needs to be done, and the PTO is going to take care of that. Going forward, so we can put in writing or, I don't want to speak for the PTO. But yeah, we were going to do it. I was hoping to get a, you know, a positive reaction. I'm hoping I'm not speaking out of turn, but I like getting free stuff, so I hope the town likes my beliefs. But any, I'm here, so if you have specific questions, I can answer them right now.
So I think, I think too, also, the usage of it depends, like, so what, the maintenance of it, yes, there's maintenance tied to it, but how we're going to use this versus how you would use, you know, the Braintree High Football Field or, you know, where they play soccer and stuff. That maintenance plan is far more aggressive than, you know, kindergarten to fifth graders running around at recess for 20 minutes at a time, you know. So we can come up with a maintenance plan for that and what that plan is, but again, the maintenance on this, yes, there is a maintenance plan, but the usage is going to be vastly different than an athletic field, right? This is purely recreational. This isn't for, this isn't big enough to hold, like, wearing Braintree youth soccer games. Like, there's not going to be tournaments there or anything, like, this is just for the Highlands community to, you know, kick a ball around, play, you know, I don't know, what do they play at recess? I don't know. It's been a while, but that's the type of, that's the type of usage it's going to be. It's, again, it's not built to hold, you know, you know, a 7v7 soccer game or something like that. So it's going to be a different type of maintenance plan than what probably is industry standard on something like this because of the type of usage it would receive.
In May, I have the Braintree High Football Field, we installed that. That has undergone very little maintenance. We were on the hook for, I think, two years, so you see what it looks like now. So lack of maintenance as bad as a field can get, they're still not bad.
Make the course.
Thank you.
There, so.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Fleming for his generosity. And the PTO, having had both my boys go through Highlands, I realize the need for outdoor recreation areas, and this is a great idea. And we have had some conversations in regard to this. You know, our rec department will definitely be involved as far as helping with maintenance and things of that nature. And, you know, I know that Chris Griffin has probably spoken to you and will continue to do so. So, you know, from my office, we support this, and we will do whatever we can to help with maintenance and making sure that it's secure, et cetera. So I just wanted to let the committee know that, you know, we do support this, and it's something that we'd love to see happen. And if, the question is tonight, do we go forward, you know, to order the items so that the price doesn't go up? I mean, I would think that that would be a good direction to go, and then as far as the plan for, you know, maintenance, obviously, you know, you're the expert, but how do we protect it? That's something we can work with you on to make sure that no one has access to it late at night, so to speak, or whatever.
Mr. P.
To the chair. So, not being a big sports person. I, can you clarify for me, is a turf field sort of a safer playing field? I just know there are kind of scraped knees and elbows on a high-top playground. Does this provide a more of a cushion fall if the kids, if the kids fall during kickball or whatever?
At the moment, our point of comparison is blacktop, so it's not much than that. But children currently play on the, on the blacktop.
So the turf. Is there, is there data that says that it's safer than where the kids stay on?
Do you want to share the materials?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's certain test sets to pass there. There's a GMAX score and the HIC score. The two scores you get basically measure the impact, attenuation, all of those things. And every new field needs to be tested and meet both criteria. And if turf scores are S and B, an asphalt would be off scale. So that was, that's the reason I wanted to do this, when I went back there and saw that the kids were running around 100 miles an hour on asphalt. Concussions, how they're not treating knees, how the bloody noses every other day. But so that was why I wanted to extend the space at the school, so.
But this turf isn't going to stop those type of injuries either, right? It may help prevent them at a level, maybe, but it's not going to be like the end-all, be-all, right? Like, it is a synthetic brass that has blown in rubber into it so that it gives you that feel of, you know, soil and cushioning, but it is still a hard circle. Depending how a child strikes the ground, I just want to be clear, like, it's not going to stop everything. Could it help? Yes, absolutely.
Mr. P, anecdotally, you know, if you go to the turf fields that we have at the high school, they are far more cushioned than the pavement outside tonight. And so when, when students in an athletic contest hit that ground, they're less likely to have a significant impact than they would be if they were on one of these fields.
Now, as someone who has monitored many a elementary school recess, I would, I would say that this is a favorable thing for Highland School to have this turf field installed, that would give them an element of a safer playing field. So I would, I would be in favor of it.
Any other questions?
Through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. My concern or my question would be, you know, $45,000 is a lot of money to ask people, you know, to fundraise. What are you planning to do? And I'm sure that a lot of the other schools would like to have this opportunity too. And some of my concerns would be about equity, you know. And, you know, because maybe the PTOs don't have the money to raise it like that, raise as much money as you folks do. So, you know, what do you plan to do for fundraising?
We have a couple fundraisers that we have planned today, and a couple that we plan on trying to bring back, is probably the best way to put it. So we did a couple years ago, a Fit Challenge, where the kids, it's a walk-a-thon type thing. It's a little bit of a different spin than a walk-a-thon, but where the kids get a little bit more active in types of activities within the area, and people, you know, parents and, you know, families and friends help support that, similar to what you guys see, have seen other schools raise with walk-a-thons or those type of activities. Two years ago, was it two or three years? It was probably three years ago now. We raised $30,000 just in that activity alone. We haven't done one since that point, because we've been using that surplus to help support, you know, school activities, et cetera. So we feel that this is a good opportunity for us to bring that back and put some of the funding there. We also, in the past, used to hold a 5K up in the Highlands community where we raised money, and we feel that those two will be the majority of the spend. Because again, we don't want to over-fundraise and do 25 fundraisers to raise $45,000, right? Like, we know that there's a fatigue there, so we have a couple targeted events of fundraising that we do plan on leveraging again, and these aren't things that we leverage year over year. These are special events that we raise certain types of funds for certain types of activities. And we've, when we met with the community of Highlands at the PTO meeting, those were some of the fundraisers that we identified as our big pocket fundraisers that will, these funds will go to this, this if approved.
Thank you.
Oh, and I was just going to say, in the second part of my question was, so $45,000, do you think that's the best use of the money for, because we did get some emails from, you know, is there a better use of $45,000, and could that money be used in a different capacity? And so that I feel like we could ask that question as well.
Great question.
Yeah.
I don't know. What we did do is Dr. Long put out the survey for everyone to give their opinion. 80% of the school base that did respond to the survey are in favor of us moving forward. Again, those 20% may have concerns and feel that, but the majority that had the ability to comment and give us feedback, because we didn't want to come here today unless we had the backing. This isn't five people at Highlands saying we want to do this. We have 80% of the people that had the opportunity to vote saying, yes, this is something we are all committed to here at Highlands. So we've given people opportunities and platforms. You know, is there always opportunity to use funds in different fashions? Absolutely. But we've been very clear with this, and we feel that we have the support of Highlands today for this, to move forward.
I'm the PTO president at Highlands. One reason we're going after this right now is because people came forward with the opportunity. So because we're getting so much of it subsidized through this company, we think that this is a good way to spend the money. And right now, we do have enough to put the down payment down, and it's not going to take away from the programs that we normally run. We're still going to fund field trips, cultural arts, teacher reimbursements, all the normal things that we do so that children won't see, or the teachers won't see anything taken away from their yearly experience. This will just be, you know, a one-time above and beyond thing to help your community. We don't have that, I think, every other elementary school does.
Mr. Devon, a second.
Second, thank you. Please know that I'm not against this, and I love free stuff. But you know what I hate worse than free stuff? Free stuff we get, we don't maintain. There's another elementary school within driving distance of that school, that got a beautiful baseball field put on the side. It was great for a few years, and then the chain link fence started to fail, and other things like that. Ed? And I, I need to have a person from Park Parks and Recreation is gonna stand up and say, we have this. Saying, well, we, we think we have it. No, I, I'd like to see what he says. Another thing is, okay, you've got to spin that media in. Do we already have the machines somewhere in town? If we do, we should be able to use that for that field. So we don't buy it again thereby saving us some money. I see the positives in this. I, I want to see that, but I'd like to represent it from that. With that being said, I, I'd make a motion to chair until our next meeting.
Good to. I, I, I want to second it, but I also, I would like more information on this. Like, I want the nitty gritty, like, was gonna maintain it? How are we gonna keep it protected? Like, if just table to January, get us that information. I know you want to put a deposit, but if we could get that information.
Put in the information. Our next meeting is the ninth. You have to put your deposit in the tenth, right?
Uh, the deposit needs to be by the end of this year, yes.
First, first, January first. I, I just want to chime in here too. I support this. Um, it's a gift. Um, you know, adding the green space, I think, will be, will be excellent. I think the mayor has spoken as far as parks and rec maintaining. I think there's a lot of questions as far as are you tearing up the asphalt and putting it, you know, over the asphalt? If, if maintain, maintenance is gonna be done by parks and rec, um, you have a, a plan for raising money and it's not gonna impact any of the programs that you currently have. And I'm sure if people want to participate in that fundraiser or not, it's purely up to them. Um, again, I'm, I'm in support of this and I, I at this point don't need any more information. I'm satisfied, but we do have a motion to table this and we have a second. So we need to vote to determine whether or not we want to table this until our January meeting, but knowing that we're, you're gonna miss your end of the year deadline, so.
Call an emergency meeting, Madam Chair.
Is this, is this as simple as putting a, a maintenance program against it? I, I am like, I'm sure between Liam, myself, and if we can get a right contact in the town, I can make a call tomorrow and give you, you know, an, an operating procedure manual on this. And I, I get, I get the question of like funding and do we have the equipment and stuff? And I, I can't answer those questions, but if the town's committed to it, like, I don't think that waiting to find out, like, if we're gonna put bollards or fencing in front of it is something that, like, these are things that I think are solvable between now and spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, it's, to me, like, it just seems like it's still something that could go forward and we can commit to getting you the information before we put the down deposit on. But I, I don't see how that would, needs to be tabled today. Like, these are, to me, details, like, yes, we're gonna mill the asphalt down, reset the grade, layer everything. Like, we can answer those, but like, I think that the solution here is something we can move forward with. And the details were happy to answer by the end of the year before we put the down deposit down.
So what's before us is to receive the gift to schools is basically what it is. It's not the maintenance plan, it's not all of that. That was, that's what we're looking for. But we have a motion to table this until our next meeting. Or if we, it would be January ninth unless we create a second, and we have a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. So we're not tabling it. So um. We have a motion by Mekah Corus to improve the gifts to schools. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain. Don't have enough information at all.
Okay, it's five to two. It'll, it's been accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the gifts and good luck with your fundraising.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, Mr. Lee, the acknowledgement of the winter, winter coaches.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, within your package, you will find a list of the coaches for the winter season. Uh, additionally, we ask for your acknowledgement of these hires uh as the season began uh on Monday of this week.
Are there any questions?
Last week, I'm sorry.
Any questions about the winter coaches? Were acknowledging?
Uh, vote to acknowledge, yes, please.
I have a motion to vote to acknowledge.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Lynch and by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Uh, just some quick administrative updates. Uh, one, just uh to bring some information back. Um, at the previous meeting, you had voted to declare a surplus, uh, several items related to our COVID strategies. Uh, we were able, uh, and I say we because Kristen Houlihan and her staff actually did work. Uh, we were able to donate uh twelve hundred and forty N ninety-five masks and a hundred and fifty blue caution gowns to the Alliance Healthcare on Growth Street in Braintree. I just wanted to make you aware we were able to do that. Uh, second bit of information is just to uh inform you that we are already beginning to prepare for kindergarten for next year. Um, on Friday, uh, December second, uh, mailings were sent out to all known families who would potentially be participating in kindergarten, uh, along with the process, the cost of the program, what parents need to complain, uh, complain. To complete uh the registration process as well as a sheet with our frequently asked questions. The information is also in all our school newsletters and will be added to the website on the town's electronic board as soon as possible. Uh, email to all preschools in Braintree, including all the private ones. For next year, the cost of the full day program is uh thirty seven hundred and fifteen dollars per student. Uh, and we have a reduced tuition rate for those who qualify of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So we are beginning that process. I just wanted to make sure of the fact that we're up and running on that.
Thank you. Any question?
You're right.
Are there any questions about the kindergarten registration? Can I ask someone to get me some water? Thank you. Okay. Any questions about registration? Any other questions about anything? No. All right, so moving on to um student representative updates.
I can start us off.
Thank you.
Um, first off, I can speak for myself and the other representatives. We hope you all had a great Thanksgiving break. Um, as we're moving into the holiday season, various clubs and organizations within Braintree High School are working on providing for families and students in need within the Braintree Public Schools, similar to um the Turkey Drive that we held before Thanksgiving break. We, the body of various other clubs and honor societies, over the Adopt a Family fundraiser, which we hold annually. Um, and in a quick summary, it raises money through gift cards that we hand out to families in need so they can afford to purchase presents for their children. Um, and then also, so that is run mainly by student body and student council with addition of all of our clubs and all five of our national societies. And we typically have donations from other organizations, um, including the Colbert Administration, which is always very helpful. Um, and also just other side fundraisers and awareness um programs happening for the holiday season. The key is, as it does every year, creates um cards for children at the Boston Children's Hospital um that are going through treatment for various illnesses during the holiday season. Um, and these cards are made at lunch by students um just to send out and wish them happy holidays and hope that their treatment goes well. Um, so overall, the high school is working in many steps to make sure that everyone feels prepared and happy for the holiday season approaching.
Sorry. I. Need water? Very dry in here, yeah.
Um, recently, the class of twenty twenty-four has had some financial success. We've had a couple of fundraisers over the past month or so. We had one recently at Chipotle, which raised four hundred dollars. And then last week, we also had one at Jake and Joe's, which raised almost four hundred dollars as well. So I'm personally, as a member of student council, especially with June the prom coming up. Um, we also do have recently a planning session for the Diversity Council, which I know Anika's on, so maybe she can speak about that after, and some other clubs. Um, we had a diversity pep rally last year that went quite well. But recently, I know the officers who um work with Diversity Council wanted to sort of expand that into a full week of activities and student involvement. So there was a meeting with the different clubs, including the Slumming Club, Screen Council, Gem or Girls Empowerment Club, and uh Cultural Awareness Club to sort of plan sessions for later this spring, get students involved in club activities, know, just learn about what that club's about. Maybe it interests them or just getting kids involved in general. So that's something to look forward to in the spring. And then there is also a donation tentative, but a donation bin maybe going out in the uh front lobby of the school for the Braintree Christmas party, which is a sampling so that some students can donate toys and contribute to that drive.
Uh, I'd like to take a minute to speak about uh an initiative that uh is run by the Environmental Club, spearheaded by myself. Uh, it is a plan for what I like to call a voluntary blackout, where we encourage residents to turn out their lights for one hour. This uh hour is going to be on the night of December thirteenth. This is the peak of the Gemini meteor shower. Um, and I, as a person who is extremely fond of both environmentalism and astronomy, uh, I've taken a spearhead to this. And um this event has been approved by both the Braintree Police Department, the location approved by Dr. Scully, and if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Lee or Mr. Lee, I apologize.
That's okay, I should have studied more.
Um, and basically what I'm asking of the parents that are present and the members of the committee is to, you know, spread the word, um, encourage residents of the town to turn off their lights, please, and uh maybe attend the event at the high school.
Is there a certain time period we should shut off our lights?
Nine P M. and ten P M.
Just one hour?
One hour, that's all we're asking. And I'm done.
That's easy.
We're serving on chocolate.
So to add on to what we're on, Sam, we're saying, I think, like, the holiday season, there's a lot of, like, donation drives, tour drives. I know personally, I have a food drive for the March Christmas Center coming up. And um I have a fellow ambassador from three five one and a friend. She's having a food drive at Nobles Academy in Dedham to support the March Christmas Center. And then um we also have a lot of club tour drives just to help out, starting that's always exciting. And then as Sam was saying, like, Diversity Council and a lot of other clubs, we're planning to have uh a couple of days during Spirit Week where we just have breakout groups and just um different clubs coming together and having these um, having like the students with the organizations at our role that they could participate in and just focus on mental health and, you know, regrouping, you know, during the school year. And um that's something a lot of people are looking forward to. And then um I think we had uh Mr. Porthoros come to our new ASA Asian Student Association and see if we can plan for the new, like, Chinese Lunar New Year that is gonna be coming up. So I think a lot of members of the club were interested to work with the town and help spread knowledge on that. And um finally, I think that intra-club that we run, we're having a drive to make little blankets for children um and foster care families. So there's a lot of people coming to that meeting interested in, these are just gonna be warm blankets, you know? The whole, like, meaning behind it is to give a warm hug to a child, you know, in a foster home. Just hop out and touch, spread like holiday cheer.
No offense to anybody else in this, in this meeting, but this is my favorite part.
I agree.
Favorite part of the meetings and just the work that you guys are doing and, you know, behalf of the student body and the entire student body and all these clubs that it's, it's inspiring. So you, you guys are, yeah, are inspiring. You're, you're making me very proud. So thank you all very much for your reports. Any questions from the committees? Yeah, excellent. Just wow.
Through the chair. I, I was gonna say that I attended the um, the Theater Guild's presentation of Anastasia, which was very awesome. You know, they did a great job, so I always enjoy that. So that was really uh well attended too. I think everybody had a great time. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Policy and Education Subcommittee update. Ms. Tuffy.
So the Policy and Education Subcommittee met on, on November sixteenth. And uh we considered two policies to be added to the Republican Public School policy. Uh, both of them are um are from Massachusetts Association of School Committee, so they're standard of policies. And uh both have been uh, Desi has suggested that both of these policies would be uh good for Braintree to have uh in light of the uh Education Stability Performance Review um that's been. The first uh policy is um educational opportunities for military children. Um, this is based on Mass General Law fifteen E and the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. Its purpose is to remove barriers to educational success imposed on children of military families resulting in frequent movements required by parents or guard, guardians um uh going, having, being deployed elsewhere. Um, and it, it deals with um uh records, immunizations, um honor placements from the sending school, um acceptance of exit exams from the sending uh school and um um and that the receiving school would accept responsibility for uh things such as existing I E Ps. And that is the first of these policies. Um, and uh this is a first reading for that. Um, the second? Can I go on to the second?
I was just gonna say, are there any questions at this time on the, on the first? Are these pretty boilerplate?
These are boilerplates.
They're right from?
They're really, if, if we choose to, we can approve them today, especially since it's been encouraged by Jesse that we include them in, in our policies.
Okay. Move on to the second one?
Okay. The second policy is uh similar. This one is uh educational opportunities for children in foster care. And it's uh based on uh federal laws such as the Every Student Succeeds Act and Fostering Connections Act of two thousand eight. Uh, it is MASC policy that was uh written and updated in October two thousand nineteen. And like with the uh military, children, military families, its purpose is to ensure educational stability for students in foster care. Um, it states that students in foster care can continue to attend their school of origin unless it's determined um that attending the school where they reside in foster care is in the child's best interest. So there's a, what's called a best interest determination that uh is decided by all the stakeholders. And it also um provides that the district point of contact will collaborate with DCF to ensure the students can access transportation and services. Um, so it's, any questions on, on the second policy?
Any questions second? And again, boilerplate? Right, right from the.
Through the chair. I just wanted to point out that even though we didn't have a policy for this, we actually complied with this. Um, and we always try to make sure that kids are least disruptive and that they maintain, um, you know, they stay with us. And, and so while we don't have, didn't have a policy, we comply with it. So I think this makes sense. Um, you know, it's just reiterating our commitment to these, to these children.
Absolutely, thank you.
So would we like to move?
Mr. Evans, excuse me, Mr. Evans.
Madam Chair, uh, in past, we, unless there's a time crunch, and I don't believe there's a time crunch on this, I would ask that we observe the first reading and then the second reading.
That is a no policy, yeah. And there's no rush on either one of this, and as we're already adhering to them as it is.
If they were, it would be a whole different.
We'll take them up at the next meeting.
And so um we, we also uh looked at the draft of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year uh calendar. Um, if you want to speak to that, Mr. Lee, it's just pretty.
This one's pretty routine. So uh the way the calendar falls next year, it's more traditional, um, for lack of a better description. Um, certainly is a first reading. If you have questions and you want to reach out, I'm happy to answer any that you have. Uh, but this is our first uh proposal for next year's calendar.
First reading, so again, we'll take it up in the.
Next meeting, uh, and also Policy and Education Subcommittee has been reviewing all of the hundred or so policies. We've, we've branched our way through um um section um for the most part. And, and we will continue to get uh in time so that everybody's familiar with policies and we can ensure that all our policies are up to date. So our next meeting will be on December fifteenth at five P M. And over.
Uh, moving on to finance and operations. So the consideration of the first reading and or approval of the student activity accounts. Did everybody get a copy of these?
It should have.
Everybody got a copy of the accounts? Okay. And again, it's the first reading. So if anybody, does anybody have any questions at this time? List? And again, we can take it up on the ninth.
All right.
Any questions? It's not time critical.
No, the school committee does need to approve, um, them for use, the student activity accounts, but where we are in the year, January ninth, it's not.
Okay, fine.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. In the past, what we've gotten, we've gotten a sheet that says the individual clubs, so to speak, and it says, you know, what, what they're actually doing, what they believe they're gonna need that year, who their, um, who their, um, um, teacher guidance person will be. Uh, is, is that a hard thing to come by?
You provide that.
The advisors are listed, right, they're listed.
I saw a little bit of a blur, but.
Yeah, if you're looking.
You're getting a sheet of paper.
Looking for more, uh, specific information about exactly why they raise any types of money. I can bring you back something on the ninth. Um, as you know, the student activity account has access. When they raise money, it goes into our savings account, they can access, access it through our checking account. That is, in essence, what you're approving, their ability to use those accounts. But I'm happy to bring back additional information for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, and then the next item, I will refer to you for the.
So i- in your packet, i- is an advisory that, uh, comes from the Operational Services Division, um, of the state. It is a proposed increase, uh, they, they help regulate the, the cost of, uh, private tuitions or special education programming in the state. Uh, and they have, uh, suggested that they are willing to allow a fourteen percent increase uh, to private tuition rates for special education. Uh, this is a huge dollar figure, not only to this district, but to all districts within the state. Um, we have, uh, uh, district, uh, as superintendent, we have sent a letter, uh, to all our representatives asking for this support and having this either feathered out over multiple years or decreased entirely. Uh, a fourteen percent increase to this element of our budget is about seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so we have been working with our legislators to see if we can get some relief, um, in the short term. So, uh, any support that you can offer in, in your own relationships with our legislators is appreciated, appreciated. Um, but we will work through it.
Mm-hmm. Making sure, making sure we all reach out, um, reach out to our legislators and just.
And they've been, uh, to be fair to them, very responsive. Uh, I, I too reached out to them, they've called me, they've, they've met with me. So they are very open to being helpful, so, but I think the more voices, the, the merrier, because it, it, it really is, and again, statewide, it is a huge hit for towns to take.
Right, we're typically two percent.
Kind of less. So in, and we're talking decades, so this, this is a huge increase.
Let's come on.
To the chair. Um, will our circuit breaker money be able to cover some of this?
Uh, circuit breaking on, on its own, no, because, uh, circuit breaker money is one pile of money.
Right.
So it just means that at some point they'll run out and some reimbursement we could have gotten, we won't be able to because they don't have the funds anymore. Yeah, there is, there is some feathering in, uh, some other transportation money that's in the, um, uh, Every Child Succeed, uh, Student Opportunity Act, that would help a little bit, but not to the type of dollar figures we're talking about.
Any other questions on that? Ms. Tuffy?
So, um, just to clarify, the, the, um, workforce grants, uh, E A A S E S workforce grants from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, there's, uh, those, those come from the state, not the federal government, or do they come from the federal government?
I believe the workforce grants are local, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
So we don't know whether they, that, we don't know whether there will be an F Y twenty-four grant?
I am not, not aware of that, that information at this point in time. It would not help us with special education regardless, uh, because these are special education tuition increases.
This is the purpose of the, uh, uh, of this is to, um, provide us supplemental funding to assist with recruitment for special educators at private schools. Um, so is, uh, uh, so especially eight, uh, the eight point eight two percent of the fourteen percent is a work.
So, so some, some of the, some of the private schools are spending bonus money for those people who come to work for them.
Right.
Because obviously, we do not do.
Right.
Uh, and so, you know, part of their fourteen percent increase incorporates money that is being paid as a bonus for people to come and work with them, which has a dual negative impact on us. One, because it can be recruiting away our own people, because we're not gonna pay them the bonus. And two, the tuition cost is now escalated and costs the district more to send students to that particular school. So one of the arguments that has been made to the legislators is that, look how unfair this is. Not only are you raising the cost, but you're also providing, in that increase, their ability to steal our staff people while at the same time charging us more to send students to that, that school, so.
So this is, this is coming from, uh, uh, final days of the Baker Administration. Uh, and, and we don't know what coming administration, how they'll handle this. But you suggest that we write to our, our state representatives and state senators to make them.
Senator Timothy, uh, Senator Keenan and Representative Cusack, we've been in contact with all of them. I, I, again, I would encourage all of the school committee to, to reach out as well.
Okay, so this would be part of the F Y, uh, twenty-four budget.
Correct.
Yeah, which they're. This usually, uh, gets approved after the deadline and. Slide, yeah. Okay.
Okay, great, so we will do that. Um, I just wanna add, um, we also met, the Finance and Operations also met on, um, the sixth of November. And I just wanted to add that, that the Hollis Funds, we continue the discussion about the Hollis Funds, and the fund is healthy. And there is no need to adjust the expenditures at this time, specifically the A P exams. So we will continue to fund A P exams through the Hollis Fund. And, um, Finance and Operations will do an annual review of the Hollis Funds going forward. And then just the other note I wanted to mention is that, um, Mr. Lee also shared a budget meeting calendar that aligns with the town's charter as far as the budget process. Um, so starting in January, we, currently, we do not have a December meeting for Finance and Operations. We need to schedule a January meeting, um, so I don't have a date for you tonight. But we will be discussing the F Y twenty-four budget at every Finance and Operations budget meeting going forward, so. Um, and again, our January meeting will be determined, so I will check with the members of the committee and we'll, we'll set up a date. So with that, um, I would like to wish everybody, uh, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Um, our next meeting will be, uh, Monday, January ninth here. And with that, can I get a motion adjourned?
So move, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Devon? By Miss, Mr. Devon, Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Pablo?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Yeah, return.